Good morning, everybody. This is the time and place set for the zoning board of adjustment for the city of Pittsburgh hearings on September 5th, 2024. The first case of the morning is zone case 122 of 2024 for 5734 Walnut Street. The applicant is identified as Brad Ray. Do we have Brad Ray or somebody else representing the applicant? If you could raise your hand and let us know you're there. There we go. This is Melissa Carlock. You should get a note that you're being admitted as a panelist. Could you say hello and let us know you're there? Hello?
Hello. We're here.
Who is this, please?
This is Melissa Ray. I think my Zoom name has my maiden name on here. I'm here with Brad Ray as well.
This is here.
Thank you. And are you the only two who are going to be testifying on behalf of the applicant?
Yes, correct.
All right. And do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you. Joe, could you read the case in, please?
This is case 122 of 2024 for 5734 Walnut Street. The application is for a change of use to two residential units, and they're requesting a variance from section 903 dot O3 dot C dot 2. 1,800 square foot minimum lot size per unit is required, and 1,700 and 18 square feet per unit is requested.
All right. Thank you. So to the rays, we have your materials up. If you would like to, we control the screen, so if you want to let us know when to change a page, let us know. But could you explain what it is that you're proposing here?
Yes. So we purchased our home on 5734 Walnut Street in 2021, and the form that we purchased the home, it was an existing, it was set up as two units into one single family home. And what I mean by that is that the previous owners had built an addition to the home. It was a blended family. So the husband and his children lived in the front half of the house, and his wife and her children lived in the two-story addition that was built in the rear of the home. And it connected through a passageway through the kitchen. So both sides of the home are fully equipped. So I mean, they have bedrooms, bathrooms, a full kitchen.
A separate electric panel as well.
Excuse me for a second. Just be careful not to talk over one another because we have a court reporter who's trying to identify who's speaking. So one at a time, if you get a handoff, handoff, but don't talk over one another. Thank you.
So both sides of the house have separate furnaces, water heaters, electric panels, and kitchens, bathrooms, and bedrooms. On each side of the house, we can go to the next slide. So you could see, this is how we purchased the home. You have the passageway through the kitchen of the original house, and it connected into the living room of the addition. We can go to the next slide. So a modification that we did to basically create two units is we just sealed up that doorway from the kitchen of the original house to the addition, so we put the five-eighth drywall on both sides.
So just a question here. You've already done the work to create the separation, and now you're trying to get a formal certificate of occupancy. I will say the zoning district is R2, but the lot size is not quite large enough for the lot size per unit requirement.
That's correct. So we didn't realize that when we purchased our home. It was listed as a three-unit home by the county. So when we created, when we sealed off the passageway, we were also trying to split the meters, and we wanted to see about splitting the gas and the electric. And that's when we learned that we had to go through this whole zoning application to change it.
So let me, let me ask you a couple of questions, and I apologize, there is a little bit of a lag on the Zoom here. But first of all, could you tell us where the property is? We know that it's on Walnut Street in Shadyside, but is it like, do you have a, an aerial view of where the parcels is? And could you tell us what the dimensions of the parcel are? And is there parking on the parcel for two units? I mean, a little bit of background would be helpful.
Sure. So my husband's looking up the, let me see here, what does that say? So the, our property is located kind of in like the residential side of Walnut Street. I guess people know like Georgie's Cafe. We're kind of across the street from it, on the corner of Maryland and, and Walnut Street. And we have a two-car garage that offers off-street parking, but it's only accessible through the addition because it connects to the, through the kitchen of the addition. And then for the original house, which is what's accessible from Walnut Street, is, has on-street parking.
And when you, you had said that the county identified this as a three-unit property, do you have any evidence from the city, like a certificate of occupants, certificate of occupancy, which would have identified it as a three-unit?
Not from the city, from the county.
No, the county doesn't issue a certificate of occupancy, but you don't have anything that identifies this as a three-unit from the city?
No.
Okay. And do you have any idea when the addition was constructed? I mean, is it from 1922, or is it from 1980 or later than that?
We think it's around the 1980s, or maybe 1980s, 1990s. We tried to look up any like background information of when exactly the addition was built, but we couldn't find an exact date.
Okay. And your intent is not to have three units, but just to have two units?
That's correct. So right now, we're using the addition as kind of like an in-law suite. So, but we just want, essentially want to split the meter, so all the utilities aren't coming under one bill.
All right. And do any of you, we'll look at the rest of the slides that you have, but do you have anything that identifies the dimensions of the parcel? I mean, I'm assuming that it's whatever 17, 18 times 2 is, but is it a long lot? I mean, what, what does it look like?
Let me see what slide it would, I think I put...
Slide 10.
Yeah, I think it's on this one. It has information on the...
Can you see?
Does this one like show the dimensions of the lot?
Okay, well, we can, we can look it up. It says, you don't have any material that indicates that. Is it, is it a, is it a long, narrow lot, or is it, I mean, I'm just curious?
Yes. It's a long, narrow lot. So they, there's a small patio kind of along the street that's enclosed. And I mean, essentially, this, this home takes up the whole block. It's a very long, narrow home.
And you said that you're at the corner, are, I'm just trying to understand how, you said there's a two-car garage. Is there access from the rear of the parcel? I mean, where is?
Yes. So we, the biggest streets would be Walnut and Maryland, but there is an alleyway that allows access to the garage, which is Osterberg Way. So you would turn off of Walnut to Osterberg Way, and you would enter the garage from Osterberg Way.
So that there's, the entrance is from the side, not from the rear?
From the side, yeah, from the side off of Osterberg.
And that's only available to the, the second unit, the rear unit, essentially?
Correct.
Okay.
But each, each unit has multiple points of egress. In my size, I pointed, you know, the, the rear of the home, in addition to the garage, has three separate doors to the, to the outside, one off, two off the living room, and two in the kitchen. And the front of the home has the main entrance and another door in the rear that, that goes to the back patio, which is accessible from both units.
And one other question from me, and then the other board members might have questions, but this isn't an R2 zoning district, but are there other multi-unit or duplex units near your property?
Yes.
Yes, there's several. If you live in our neighborhood, there's several, you know, there's one across the street that's multi-unit. I think it's three units, you know, one on the, there's a lot, a lot of our neighborhood is multi-unit, duplexes and triflexes.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Richardson, Ms. Burton Falk, any questions for the applicant?
No additional questions, Madam Chair, but I would ask that if she could send in an aerial, just for context of the site, because I'm looking here on, on, but yeah.
I think it would be helpful for the record to have an aerial view or, and the dimensions of the parcel, so that we can consider that as well.
Okay. I can, I mean, I could show an image, I may have to do a screen share, if I can get an image from our property listing. They do have an aerial, aerial view of the property from the original listing.
You can, you can look on Google, you can look on the county website. We don't, we just would like to have it as part of the record of the hearing.
Okay.
Mr. Richardson, any questions? Okay. And did you, did you talk to your neighbors about what it is that you're proposing to do?
Yes, we mentioned it to our next-door neighbor because they asked about the hearing, and they are all already aware that, you know, our home is set up as a two-unit home, essentially. But we told them we were having the hearing, because they asked about the notice. Our neighbors directly next to us asked about the posting that we had in our window. And I explained that we were going through this hearing so we can formalize the use of the house as it currently exists and to split the meters.
Okay. Thank you. I'm going to turn to our list of attendees. Is there anybody who would like to comment or raise questions about the case for 5734 Walnut Street? All right. Seeing no hands, oh, wait, there is a hand raised. Brian Gumberg? Mr. Gumberg, could you?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes. And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do. Thank you.
Can you?
So, yes.
Go ahead.
It's Brian Gumberg. I live at 800 Maryland, sort of behind the applicants here. And I don't have any major objections here, but a few of our neighbors weren't able to sort of get the notices from the city, so they just asked that I chime in just to make sure that I could articulate what the actual request was. If I'm, if I'm looking at it correctly, it's just the lot size is not large enough to accommodate the two units. Is that correct?
The, the item on the zoning board's agenda is that in an R2M district, the requirement is that there is 1,800 square feet per unit. And with two units, this lot would come, it would allow for a 17, 18 square foot per unit. So they're about 82 square feet off the requirement, but it's...
Okay. Thank you. I just wanted to make sure that, I think our neighbors just were concerned that there were going to be more than two units in the house, and they just wanted me to get some clarification for the, for the group here.
Yes, and we understand it as a request for two units, not more than that. And it would, two units would allow for the 7, 1,718 square feet per unit.
Okay, very good. Thank you for your time.
No, thank you for, for raising the comment and the question. And unless there's any, I think there's no additional information, no additional questions being raised here, we are going to move on to the next case. So thank you for being here this morning. If you can provide us with that additional information, that would be helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next case of the morning is zone case 124 of 2024 for 5338 Kincaid Street. The applicant is identified as Aiman Elokta. Do we have an applicant for this case? If you could raise your hand if you're here for 5338 Kincaid Street. There we are. Elizabeth Boyer. She should be admitted as a panelist. Oh, no, wait a minute. There's, Aiman Elokta. We'd like to hear from the applicant, so let's... Hello? Are they being admitted as panelists? Okay. I'd like to first hear from the applicant, Aiman Elokta. Could you let us know that you're there?
Yeah, I'm here.
Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Are, are you the only person who is going to testify on behalf of the applicant?
I'm Aiman Elokta, and Melissa also is here. She will...
Okay. And do you swear or affirm that the information that you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And again, if there are two of you, please try not to talk over each other. There is a court reporter who's trying to take down what you say, and it's difficult if you talk over one another. Joe, could you read the case in, please?
This is case 124 of 2024 for 5338 Kincaid Street. The application is for the construction of a new deck, and they're requesting a variance from section 903 dot O3 dot D dot 2. A five-foot interior side setback is required, and a five-inch setback is requested.
All right. So we have whatever materials you've provided to the board, but do you have, could you tell us where the property is? And do you have any layout of the parcel so that we understand where the setback would Sorry. Ms. Boyer, are you with the applicant, or are you?
I, I work with Aiman.
Excuse me?
I am with the, I am with the applicant, yes.
Okay. So could you explain what's going on here? Are you, are you, are you an architect, or are, how are you related to the applicant here?
I work for the applicant's construction, so, company, we, the owner.
Okay.
And I'm, like, we had an architect draw the schematics and the drawings and everything. And the only issue that got raised was that we want to put a back deck on the property that the neighbor is worried about privacy, but they have the same deck, and their deck is covered, and they have a very large fence.
Okay. One at a time, please. And is, I'm, I'm looking at the right-hand corner of the drawing. Is there, is there currently a vacant lot that you're proposing to build a house, and the deck is the only issue? Or is this a brand-new deck on an existing house?
A new deck on an existing house.
Okay. So does the existing house comply with the interior setbacks on both sides?
Yes.
So why does the deck need to extend to within, I mean, there's a five-foot required setback. Why do you, what is your basis for asserting that you need only a five-inch setback?
Well, the, the issue is that the, our neighboring houses, they're very close together.
Right. But you've just said that the house complies with the setback. Why can the deck not comply with the setback?
I don't think the deck doesn't comply with the setback. The only issue being raised is that the neighbor doesn't want the deck to...
No, no, no. So, sorry. You're requesting a variance from the requirement that there's a five-foot setback, and you're requesting that there be a five-inch setback instead of a five-foot setback. So it's not really about the neighbor, it's about whether you're complying with the setback requirement. So what we want to understand is why, why the deck can't be within the same footprint or within the same property lines as the house?
Oh, because the current, okay, that makes sense. The current deck that's on the house is in a very small and almost side of the house. We want to do what the other two neighbors did and build to the back of the house and out into the yard slightly. That's why. Because currently, the current deck of the house is completely crumbled, and we just want to add value to the home by adding a nicer back deck to compete with the neighbors on both sides.
But it's not a competition. I mean, there has to be, sorry.
But like, we just want, like, it could be a nice deck.
Excuse me, but why, again, the, the question that we have in front of us is there's a five-foot setback required, you're asking for five inches. It's, what is it about your property, not the neighbor's property, what is it about your property that prevents you from complying with that five-foot setback? And it's not, we want a bigger deck, it's the, could it work to have a deck that complies with the setbacks?
No, because the way the house is built, the back of the house is very narrow. That would, it would greatly, greatly affect the deck, because the deck would be cut literally in half. So it wouldn't work if it was, if it wasn't the five inch, because the deck, the way the house is shaped from the back, is very narrow. The widest part of the house is the side, and the back is narrow and the, the yard is narrow.
Well, you're not, I, I'm sorry, but you're not giving us a whole lot to go on without any photographs or any understanding of where the other structures are, where the neighbors are. Is there, are there additional, is there additional information that you could give us that would help us to understand the basis of your request?
Yes, I have a full architectural drawings for this.
Well, we don't need, I, I'm sorry, the architectural drawings are not as helpful as photographs of the house itself, the backyard, the existing deck, the surrounding neighborhood. I mean, we're, we're looking at, we're not looking at the construction of it, we're looking at whether there should be a variance from the requirement of a five-foot setback. So that, it helps us to, a picture says a thousand words. It would, it'd help us to see what the property actually looks like.
Okay. Would I be able to get those pictures and submit them?
Yeah. Yeah, you can, but that's the kind of things that we review at a hearing, so that's, that we kind of prefer to have that as part of your presentation, but we'll accept it after the hearing.
Madam Chair, in some of the material here today, posted notice, I mean, do you have anything that shows us context of, of the site at all? Okay.
Yeah, so I think that would be helpful to us.
I agree.
Mr. Richardson agrees. And you said that your neighbor had concerns about privacy. I'm going to, I'm going to open this up to the list of people who are attending. Is there anybody else who would like to comment with respect to this application? And I'm seeing a hand raised from Christian Stamler.
Hi, can you hear me? This is Christian Stamler.
Yes, and hang on one second. Do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. So can you explain what your position is with respect to this request?
I do. I am the neighbor, so I'm at 5340 Kincaid Street. So if you're looking at this drawing here, I would be to the right, looking down.
Okay. And can you explain what your concern is?
I have a couple of concerns. I'll try to go through them quickly. So the first one, which was already raised, it's a privacy invasion. So if you're looking at the deck, it looks straight into my house. I got a lot of windows. Also, I have a staircase that is borders this deck, and so the deck sits above it. And I just have concerns for accidents and liability, so if someone falls over that deck, they would be falling onto a staircase. Those are really the big two concerns that I had regarding this deck.
Okay. And with, do you have a deck at the rear of your parcel as well?
Not to the rear, to, to the side. So it doesn't go further than the extent of my house. So if you're looking at this drawing over top, I, it only goes, if you look at the seven-foot marker, it's only goes from there to the back of the house. It doesn't go further than the house comes out, if that makes sense.
Yeah. All right. So I thank you, and thank you for being here to express your concerns. We always appreciate hearing from everybody, but I think it would be helpful if the applicant could provide us a few photographs of what's going on, and then we can assess better what relief to grant. All right. And we, we will keep the record open for that additional information if you could send it in. Okay? Applicant?
Yes.
All right. Thank you. We're going to close the, we're, we're not, we're keeping the record open for that, but we're accepting the other exhibits as part of the record.
Okay.
Thank you. All right. Next case of the morning is zone case 130 of 2024 for 141 Republic Street. The applicant is identified as Ryan Crowell, who has his hand raised. Mr. Crowell, are you with us? Hello?
Hello, can you hear me?
There you are. Yes. Are you the only person who is presenting with respect to this application?
Yes.
All right. And do you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
All right. Joe, could you read the case in, please?
This is case 130 of 2024 for 141 Republic Street. The application is for a parking pad, and they're requesting a variance from 912 dot O4 dot L. Front yard parking pads are prohibited.
All right. Mr. Crowell, we have your materials up. Can you explain what it is that you're proposing here? Is this something that is already in place, and you want it to get formal approval?
Exactly correct.
Okay.
So yes, I'm the architect for the project, presenting on behalf of the homeowner, and we're seeking to permit this existing parking pad. The bottom left-hand corner of this slide shows the most intelligible area photograph I could get from 1993, showing that the pad has been around for a while. The property owner purchased this in 2020, so he did not create this, but they've been able to use it.
So we don't know, presumably, if you're asking for permission for it now, it was not legally created when it was originally installed?
We have no documentation of, of that.
Okay. And it, just looking at it from the photograph on the top right, do you have a, an image of the lot itself? I mean, it looks like side-by-side parcels, or is it all one big parcel? How does that work?
Yeah, so this slide is the side bank here, so it's a, it's a fairly wide parcel. This is at the corner of Grandview and Public, kind of at the... This is at the corner of, of Grandview and Republic, kind of as far, you know, down the Ohio River as you could go. It's, we are in the Grandview Public Rowham District. And so, this lot is highlighted in the site plan there. The gravel parking is highlighted in that red dash line, uh, next to the main entry for the house.
And this is a single-family house?
Correct.
And, um, so I'm looking at the image, is there a garage at the rear?
Yes, on the, on the next slide, we can take a look. There is existing parking down on Rowham Street. I just wanted to note that Rowham Street is a very large hill, and especially if you're looking at the bottom right-hand corner there, the garage is actually below the basement level. So, you've either got to hike up the hill and ground, or hike up to the basement and then come through the house.
But I, I guess, part of the question is, I mean, front yard parking isn't allowed, period. Um, so, it's not like this is, it, whereas this parking pad has been there for a while and it is, um, convenient because of the hill, it, it's not, um, required for onsite parking because you have onsite parking with a garage?
Uh, correct, and, and so, essentially, on the, on the last slide, you can see the proposed, uh, layout on the next slide, which is basically just formalizing this curb cut.
Right, but that, that's, I mean, your request is to formalize a curb cut for something that's not permitted in the, um, because front yard parking isn't permitted. So, I mean, just because it's been there doesn't mean that it's legal. I, I, and I guess, if you already have onsite parking with a garage, how is this not more than just a convenience?
Uh, well, we see it as a safety concern with having to hike up that hill, you know, potentially with, with groceries or luggage or whatever you're carrying in. Um, the, the property has been purchased with this, uh, going back thirty-plus years, and we'd like to allow continued use of that.
Well, is there any way that you're proposing to, um, be more compliant with the code's intent of not having front yard parking? Is there any way you're making it look less like a parking pad and more like a front yard like it's supposed to be?
Uh, yeah, so we, we've included a three-foot apron. Uh, you can see just between the site setback there. So, right now, the, the gravel kind of just spills out to the sidewalk. So, that'll be cut back, and it'll have a formal, you know, limited curb cut area set before the parking pad, and that, that would be grass and things getting through there.
I was gonna say, are you proposing any landscaping or, um, um, non-permeable pavers or something like that? I mean, what, what, how are you?
Uh, this would just be, be, uh, aprons in that three-foot apron to separate the, the sidewalk from the gravel parking pad area.
I mean, are you planters? I mean, anything, again, it's, it's like you're, I, I recognize that it's there, um, and I'm assuming that you don't, do you have a, I'm seeing the curb cut approved, um, for doming, right? Or was it?
Yes, it has been approved.
Okay. Okay.
This configuration. Um, we, we would certainly be open to, to doing planters or even like a little knee wall or something that would kind of, uh, run across, you know, to, to kind of screen that.
Okay, um, I don't, I don't have any questions. Um, Ms. Burton Polk or Mr. Richardson, any questions for the applicant?
Um, no additional questions, Madam Chair.
Okay, um, do we have any, um, I'm sorry, I'm turning to the list of attendees. Do we have anybody who would like to comment with respect to this application for 141 Republic Street? I'm seeing no hands raised, so, um, yeah, I, I guess, I mean, it would be helpful to me if, if, uh, the applicant might consider some conditions that we could, uh, think about in terms of making the proposed front yard parking more consistent with, um, the intent of not having front yard parking. I mean, how, how would you sort of, uh, beautify the existing gravel pad to make it more consistent with what's required?
Uh, we'd be willing to decrease the depth of that. Uh, right now, it's shown at a twenty-two foot two, and that's really just-
I, I have to say, we're, we're not actually, I'm not asking for a negotiation here. I'm just asking for an email, maybe, um, sort of a post-hearing submission that would identify what conditions you would agree to?
Certainly. Uh, we also have, my client went around to all the neighbors and, and reviewed this and prepared, he, he prepared kind of the slides, and we'll be able to enter that along with that following hearing.
That's helpful to know as well. And we, there's nobody here, um, objecting, so, but, like I said, I would be interested in understanding what conditions would be appropriate.
Certainly, we can review that and provide a, a follow-up.
All right, thank you very much. So, we'll accept the existing exhibits, and then we'll keep the record open for a post-hearing submission. All right, moving on to the next case, uh, which is Zone Case 132 of 2024 for 4618 Friendship Avenue. The applicant is identified as Matthew Dirson. Do we have the applicant here? We have Matt Dirson and M U S Law raising their hands. Hello? Who, who do we have here?
Good morning, this is Brittany Blom from Myron McKitt Scott on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you, and, uh, Ms. Blom, are, are there, uh, a number of witnesses we should be looking for? Or is it just Mr. Dirson?
Uh, Mr. Dirson's here, and I have with me this Marla Solnik and Benjamin Solnik. Ms. Solnik's gonna be testifying as well.
Okay, everybody, so-
I turned on our cam, I'm sorry, I just, I turned on the camera since we have two female voices in this room, I thought it might be helpful to see.
And thank you for anticipating that. But, um, I'm also going to ask you all, first to swear in, and then the first time you speak, if you could identify your name and spell it, and then that may help the court reporter as well. But let's start with, do you all swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Thank you. Okay, and, Joe, could you read the case in, please?
This is Case 132 of 2024 for 4618 Friendship Avenue. The application is for a change of use to a co-working makerspace, and they are requesting a special exception pursuant to Code Section 921 dot O2 dot A dot four for the change of use from manufacturing and assembly limited to art or music studio.
All right, so, Ms. Blom, we'll turn it over to you, and we have your exhibits up. Again, if you could identify yourself and spell your name for the court reporter at the outset, and then move to the different witnesses.
Yes, thank you. Um, Joe, if you can move to the second slide, that actually has the team listed there. My book was spelling. My name is Brittany Blom, I'm counsel for the team, uh, with Myron McKitt Scott. It's B R I T T A N Y, B L O A M. Uh, with me is Marla Solnik and Benjamin Solnik, the owners of the property and, and the entity. And then we have Matt Dirson, the midpoint architect, the project architect. Um, I'm gonna go through the first slides really quickly. Um, if we could move to number three, please, that just summarized our requests. Number four, um, is evidence that the hearing was posted on site. Number five just shows that the 4618 Friendship owner purchased this property in April of 2024. Next slide is six, uh, the zoning designation in this area is R1AH. Um, next slide is seven, this property is located in the Bloomfield neighborhood of the city. Uh, you can see there to the left, there's like kind of the red location marker. Um, we're looking up Friendship at Children's Hospital. The next slide, eight, is the exterior of the property. Um, next slide, ten, is the view looking south. And you can see that this property is kind of tucked back from the neighbors, um, the adjacent residential structures that are neighboring it. Ten is the view from the opposite direction, and again, just kind of showing that, that setback. Um, number eleven, we'll spend a little more time on this. So, the request here today is to change from one non-conforming use to another. Um, this property has been used, um, in a manufacturing capacity since 1920, as far as we can tell. Um, but even though this is a residentially zoned neighborhood, there are a lot of different non-conforming uses. There's commercial occupancies, there's non-conforming residences. Um, just to show that this change will still keep this property within the character, um, of the neighborhood. Number twelve, slide number twelve, just shows this is a permanent parking area. Um, on the thirteen, please, as of April 2017, when the prior owner, Saffling Press, operated the, uh, their business onsite, we had a zoning, they had a zoning voucher for manufacturing and assembly. Um, as part of that application, just for some history, um, next slide fourteen shows the original owner was Creative Chemical Company as early as 1924. Page fifteen, um, they were still in operation in 1951. They were a pool chemical company, this was all manufactured onsite again.
I'm, I'm curious as to what is a creative chemical, but there you go.
If I could have found someone from Creative Chemical in 1920 to tell us, we would have had them here.
Okay.
So, sixteen, slide sixteen shows the, the certificate of occupancy for this manufacturing and assembly limited use. Um, seventeen was another certificate of occupancy in, um, 2018 for the exhaust gases on the roof. And then eighteen gets to the, the prior owner. Um, so Saffling Holdings LLC operated a letter print, press, letter press print shop onsite from June 2017 through April 2024. Uh, Mr. Dirson was actually the architect for that.
I, I, I do believe the zoning board reviewed this at some point.
Okay.
It, it, I mean, it, it seems to me that you would have had to have had the change of use to the letter press print shop, and I-
Actually, I believe the administrator did it, not to contradict.
Did it?
It was, I was surprised, but he construed the creative chemical to letter presses being not a substantive change, so that was how that was recorded at the time. I remembered it that way too, and then I went back through the records, and I was like, no, we didn't.
I, I, it seems to me that we had, and maybe we had another letter press in, in Bloomfield, but, um, but it's your understanding that, that there was a formal approval for the change of use from the original manufacturing to the print shop? And the administrator understood that as not being a change from the manufacturing use that had been permitted?
Correct.
So, this is, so I guess what we're getting to, and we appreciate the affidavit, Ms. Blom, um, and we can, we'll take view of that. I think the critical information is about the twenty-four-hour-a-day operations, five employees, and with, um, at the peak, there were eight employees onsite. And it, it appears just from the structure of the building that there was never o- off-street parking unless there was an internal garage of some way, of some kind?
There was not on-street parking, and I think Mr. Dirson can confirm that, but there is a, I'm sorry, there was not off-street parking. There is a loading space, um, which was used for deliveries, and that will still be accessible under the new use as well.
So, the, the, now we're, having established the, the nature of the prior non-conforming operations, could you explain how, um, it's proposed to be used for the changed use?
Yes, and, uh, Ms. Solnik is here, and if you could introduce yourselves and to the board, we'll start there.
Sure. My name is Marla Solnik, spell it, M A R L A, S O L N I K. Um, I live at 311 South Branch Street in the Friendship neighborhood of Pittsburgh, which is approximately a half mile from 4618 Friendship Avenue. Um, I grew up in the city, so I'm very familiar with Bloomfield area. I'm the owner of 4618 Friendship Over LLC. Uh, this entity purchased 4618 Friendship Avenue on, uh, April fifteenth of 2024.
Could you tell more about your intended use of the property as a co-working makerspace?
Yeah, so it is going to be a co-working makerspace art studio. Uh, the programs will include, uh, a co-working space, art studio, crafting operations. Uh, there will be printing there, so it's really about creating people coming in and being able to work and make things.
All right, and who would your intended users or patrons and members be?
Um, so we're really targeting the neighborhood, uh, so residents of the neighborhood. You know that Bloomfield has like some smaller row houses for people who are working from home, who want to get out of their house and have a different space to work. They could come to that space and have an open area to work and also, uh, create and make different things.
Maybe, uh, Joe, if we can move up to slide twenty, just to reference what we're speaking, thank you. Um, Ms. Solnik, what types of equipment would you plan to have? Well, actually, let me pause here, looking, seeing that slide nineteen's up, and that was the prior owner's equipment that we're looking at, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, and you had seen that equipment onsite when you toured the property?
Yes.
And that's all been removed?
Yes, all of that equipment has been removed.
Okay, great, then if we can move to twenty, please, thank you. All right, and so, you're bringing in different types of equipment, um?
Yeah.
Who would you anticipate bringing in different types of equipment into this co-working space?
Yes.
And could you explain to the board what that, what it's about?
Yeah, so, the type of equipment for this makerspace, it's gonna be printers, there's gonna be a Glowforge, uh, laser printer, there's gonna be a 3D printer, sewing machines, uh, frigging vinyl cutters, screen printing, so, things that you could have in like a small world makerspace.
Okay, is this equipment that you're intending to bring into your proposed use, is that industrial grade, similar to the, the print shop?
No, uh, this equipment is very much things that you could buy and use at home. Um, so, uh, Glowforge is something you can absolutely have in a residential home. However, many people don't buy these things because they're very large and expensive. So, it can be, you know, impractical for an individual to own themselves. So, what we're offering is a space for people to come use this if they're really interested in using it in a shared capacity, um, so they're not making a significant commitment to it.
Okay, and would there be any mass production of art onsite?
No, uh, this type of equipment is really for like small batches, uh, for creating, experimenting, exploring, uh, prototyping is sort of how we call it. You can't make large manufacturing runs with this type of equipment.
Okay, and you already stated that you had visited the property when the print shop was still in operation. What was the atmosphere?
Um, so, the equipment, yeah, is very big, it's surrounding everywhere. Those old letter press, uh, pieces of equipment, they're incredibly loud when they're running. I mean, they're hundreds of years old type of equipment. So, it was really hard to talk, it was chaotic, well, it was guffawing. Um, yeah, it was definitely like, it felt like a manufacturing space, a bit of chaos.
And how would your, how would the proposed use of the co-working makerspace be different from that industrial?
Uh, it's definitely meant to be a quieter space. Uh, the hybrid of co-working and makerspace allows for it to be quieter. It's gonna mostly be guests. A lot of the, uh, equipment would be in a designated room, like art studio, that would have closed the door. So, it is really meant for people to come and work in a quiet space and be able to use the art stu- studio to, uh, experiment with.
Okay, great, and can we move to slide twenty-one? That's the proposed layout of the first floor.
Well, and, and I guess, I, the internal operations are important just to understand how they compare to the prior operations, but I'm more interested in, um, the hour of operation. I mean, is this something that people could come in twenty-four-seven? Or is it, um, how, how many people could be in the space at the same time? Those, I think we maybe could focus on those details?
Sure, Joe, can you move to slide twenty-three, please? And, uh, Ms. Solnik, could you tell the board your intended hours of operation?
Our intended hours of operation is, uh, going to be like a workday type of hours, so seven to seven, um, seven a.m. to seven p.m.
Okay, and as a slide shows, what is your intended number of employees that will be onsite at, at a time?
Uh, we're thinking one to two employees, and including myself, would be onsite, um, at one time.
Okay, and that's a reduction from what you understand the, the Saffling Press would be? Um, and as far as traffic generation, we've already discussed, there's, there's no onsite parking, but there- but there is a loading space.
Is that correct? Yes.
And how many deliveries would you anticipate you would receive every day?
We're thinking one delivery per day.
And can I, can I just ask, is it the kind of space because you're not intending to use the space for any sort of art gallery events? Or just, it seems to me that you could use it as a space to show off some of the things that are being created there, but maybe with equipment in the space, that that's not a preferred use? Is that something you're proposing to do or thinking about doing?
So we are proposing to have a small little gallery section to show off some of the makers' art pieces in the first floor entry area. So there would be like a really small retail to show that off, a small art gallery, and a small little coffee shop that would be open up to the public. But it's really meant for just people in the neighborhood to be able to walk in, grab, take out coffee, see these things, and walk out. The primary use of the space would be the co-working and maker space.
Well, has the coffee shop been identified as a separate use? Or is that part of the sort of description of use that you would like included with this application?
The coffee shop is really kind of ancillary to the co-working and gallery space, but not gallery space, excuse me, maker space.
Is the, and maybe I-
Everything has been identified in the application as we're describing it.
Okay, and what is, Mr. Deerson, again, it helps to identify yourself when you're chiming in.
Sorry, I don't think I spelled my name either.
That's-
Okay, sorry.
We've got it here, but what is the area of that space that would be for that use?
If you would return back to the slide, I guess it was 2020 or 21?
21, first floor.
So you can see that counter area in the upper left-hand corner. I believe there may be areas on that. If you give me a moment, I'll look back and I can find the exact square footage of that service area.
But that, I'm trying, what space are we looking at? Is it the one on the first floor plan that looks like it has two tables?
So in, on that first floor plan, slide 21, you can see the ramp that exists and the door coming in. In that front area, there's, the two tables are envisioned as retail, you know, exhibition for work that was produced by the folks who are members. And then beyond that, that counter is both sort of the centralized administrative counter where one would go to, you know, get a new membership, but also is where the coffee service would be. Behind that, under the mezzanine is a small service room with servicing, and beyond that is the restroom serving that floor. The vision, and I don't mean to speak for Marla, but I think that the vision for the seating within this space is that it's more given over to the co-working occupancy. And the coffee aspect of things is in support of that and limited to takeout, otherwise.
So this isn't a Starbucks space, it's more, and I think Ms. Blum's-
Correct, yeah. It's a neighborhood amenity because it's there, and it's a way to reach out and engage people in the neighborhood and get them interested in what's happening inside.
It does kind of change the number of employees if there is an employee who's manning a coffee shop and gallery. Or, I mean, again, we're just trying to assess how this proposed use is similar to or different than the existing nonconforming use.
That would be a question of mine, Madam Chair. The coffee shop, will it function from the 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m.? Will there be a permanent employee attached to that?
Yes, yes. The coffee shop will be functioning from 7:00 a.m. to 7:00 p.m., and there would be an employee attached to that. So the one to two employees would be servicing primarily the coffee shop and reception desk area to assist members and also assist customers who are coming in for takeout coffee. I will also always be on the location to be assisting members and managing the operations.
But it sounds like it would be a multifunction employee in addition to yourself?
Yes.
Okay, all right. Is there other information that you want us to be taking a look at?
The other information, Ms. Solnik, did you reach out to the Bloomfield Development Corporation about your plans?
Yes, I did.
And were they supportive of the plan?
Yes, they were supportive of the plan.
And we understand that they submitted a letter this week. Slide 26 also shows some other neighborhood outreach that you had done, is that right?
Yes, yeah, we reached out and had conversations with the neighborhood, and we had three other people write letters of support.
Okay.
Okay. I didn't have any other questions. Ms. Blum, did you, we're good at, sorry, Ms. Burton-Fulk, Mr. Richardson, any other questions?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
And then I'm going to turn to the list of attendees. Is there anybody who would like to comment or have questions with respect to the application for 4618 Friendship Avenue? Anybody in the room? No, nothing on Friendship? Fine. Okay, we have people, we have people here in council chambers. We actually encourage people to come to council chambers, so. All right, Ms. Blum, did you want to submit something post-hearing? Or the board can just take the application on the evidence submitted?
I think that we've submitted everything we need to submit as part of our materials.
All right, well, we will, we will accept the testimony and exhibits as part of the record, and we will close the record and issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Moving on. Next case of the morning is Zone Case 133 of 2024 for 225 North Shore Drive. The applicant is Stevens Lahey, who appears to be here. Hello, and you're here on your own?
I'll be testifying on my own. I do have a record behind us.
Okay, and do you swear or affirm that you, well, is anybody else going to testify? If you're going to testify, then you have to come up and be sworn in.
Moral support, right?
Well, if you think you might testify, come on up and be sworn in. So to both of you, do each of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Joe, could you read the case in, please?
This is Case 133 of 2024 for 225 North Shore Drive. The application is to install two high-wall signs, and they are requesting a variance from Section 919.03.m.7C. High-wall signs may be used to identify one building tenant, and high-wall signage identifying two building tenants is proposed.
All right, so what building are we talking about? And what, what's the justification for the variance requested?
Okay, this is at the 225 North Shore Drive.
And just for the record, could you identify who's speaking?
Yes.
For our court reporter who is not here in person, but she's out there.
I'm Steve Zella, Advanced Sign Company, 2121 Robinson Boulevard, 15221. Today, we're reviewing identification signage in the riverfront North Shore District. Next slide. These are the current conditions of the façades that we propose to install the signs on. This is also the former location of the Starkist signs, approximately 200 square feet each. Next slide.
So the issue in front of us is not the size of the sign, but the request to have two different tenants identified.
Correct.
So I think if we could focus in on your, the basis for that request, like what's the hardship? I mean, there is a requirement that only one high-wall sign is permitted for one tenant, not every tenant of the building. So why is this building unique? And why should we grant a variance from what the code requires, which is having only one tenant identified?
Mostly because the last decade, there was two tenant signs on the building up until 2022, when Starkist was removed.
Can you explain how that, we only saw the Starkist sign, and I interrupted, I apologize, but can you show where the signage for different tenants had been located?
Yes, yes, we'll follow us through on this. This was just the certificate for the Starkist sign. Next slide, please. This is the proposed signage. These are the structural drawings of that signage. Next slide, please. Proposed night and day images of the signage.
And again, we're not reviewing the signage itself that would be for planning commission, so we're focusing in on the issue of the two tenants as opposed to one.
Next slide, please. That's just the site plan, next slide, please. Regulations under 919.3.m.7.C. for this district either allowed 40 square feet of signage or 2% of the facade, whatever is larger above 40 feet above grade. Here, we had went with the 2% provision.
And again, we're not, we're not here about size. We're here about the, where's the second tenant?
Let's just skip over to slide 12, please, then. Nope, next, next, next. That's about the size, next. All right, here we go. So regulations also under the same code for this district state that the name of the building or business shall be mounted 40 feet above grade. The zoning administrator, Corey Lehman, has interpreted this as being one business name or building name should exist to satisfy the code. Next slide, please. This is an image from Google Maps in 2021. Sometimes whenever you're traveling on Google Maps, you'll be locked into a different time period. This shows the sign in 2021. Next slide will show Suebert's sign existing at the same time in 2021. Next slide, please. This is a certificate for the Suebert's sign that was issued in January 2019. That was under Certificate 18-SGN-163. Next slide, please.
Well, was there ever a time when the, what time, when was the Starkist sign removed?
It was not removed until March of 2022.
So there was a time when there was an overlap between Starkist and the Suebert's sign?
Yes, and not only that, but not only the Suebert's sign in this location, but between 2016 and 2018, Peoples Gas had resided in the Suebert's location. And I have that certificate as well. Next slide, please.
Was there any evidence of any variance from this provision?
No, there's no variances. The images you see here are online articles writing upon the departure of Starkist from Pittsburgh in May of 2021. The articles inform the public that they aim to close their offices in March of 2022. It would appear that two separate identification signs had existed on this particular parcel for several years before Starkist, and by their own autonomy, without citations, removed the signs when they left. Also-
So can you go back to the slide that showed the signage, the location of the proposed signage?
Yeah.
Yeah, so the signage is proposed for the corner where the Starkist signage had been?
Correct.
Where is the other signage that's there now?
It's on the southerly facade facing the river. It's on the bottom of the page, the long wall.
So that's, it's not identified in this drawing?
It is not identified in that drawing. That is our site plan for the current signage, the proposed signage.
And since part of the provision goes to the name of the building, how is this building known? Because it's, it's, part of the intent of that provision is that you're only allowing the name of the building on it. So it's the PNC Building, or the UPMC Building, or the U.S. Steel Building, who knows? I mean, but it's one tenant name, and that's why it's, that's why one building name is usually ascribed to one, that's why one tenant sign is allowed. So how is the building known?
The building, I don't believe, has a particular identification. There are several buildings identical to that building on that same strip, and they exist through each other right on that block too, along the river. One of them being the Peoples Gas Building that is currently now, that I actually have photos of, that they have an unusual situation where they have two identification signs, where it's, one shows Peoples' logo, and one on the corner on the edge says Peoples' Center, which was Del Monte Foods and then the Del Monte Center. But I can, you know, down the road, I could see that might be, that might be a problem when creating signage.
Well, I guess the question is, with any of those three buildings, do they all have their distinct identity by one tenant? Or, I mean, you're talking about the Peoples' Building. That's why I'm curious, is to the other two buildings, are they known as?
They are known, they're just-
I would say Gimbel's Coffin.
They're not, yeah, they're not identified as buildings themselves or any kind of-
But do they have a single tenant sign on those buildings?
Right now, yes. They all only have singular tenant signs. That, the only, the only one that was weird was the Peoples', where it says Peoples' Center on one side and Peoples' Gas on the other side. But I can see why it kind of got conveyed because, yeah, I can see the conveyance.
But I guess, but for the other building, there's only one tenant identified on the outside?
Well, technically, there's lower tenants, like I believe Jerome Bettis' bars down there and stuff.
Okay, so it's only the high-wall signage?
Yes, just the high-wall signs. All the lower tenants, they all have, McFadden's is our building at 225, and then they all like our bars, Tom's Watch Bar is down there. So there's all a bunch of little tenants on the bottom that have signage.
So I guess, I mean, the question I have is, what's the hardship? I mean, because we have a clear requirement that you're only supposed, if it's high-wall signage, it's only supposed to be one tenant name.
Yeah, we understand every place, this is a nonconformity, but we believe the request to install these signs as designed would be considered as a life-for-life replacement of the Starkist certificate.
So, and that's helpful to understand, because instead of a straight variance, you're asking to change a nonconforming condition in some ways?
Yes, we're not asking for an enlargement, just a life-for-life replacement. We do believe it would not change the characteristics of the district if the permit was granted, as it was in the previous years, that both companies, or two companies for that matter, identified on the building.
And the signage, you said that the bottom of the sheet is the river?
Yes.
And then the top is?
North Shore Drive.
Is that North Shore Drive? Okay.
And to the right would be PNC Park, and to the left would be a sister building.
Okay, all right. Did you have anything you wanted to add? Could you identify yourself for the record, please?
Yes, Paul Cancilla with the Department of City Planning. I think the only thing to add, I mean, Mr. Zella, he kind of described that well, just that, yeah, looking back at prior approvals, these only required, you know, the standard kind of planning commission approval for the high-wall signs, with the Starkist being the first one that was approved in 2010, and then subsequently, it was the Peoples' that went on that southerly facade in 2015. And then it was, you know, once Peoples' left, Suebert moved in, and that got approved in 2018.
Can I ask a question? Do you know when the signage requirement of one high-wall sign, tenant signage permitted? Do we know when that went into effect?
I don't have the exact date, but looking at the zoning code, the same section did not change during the time between the first approval to now.
So somebody allowed two different types of signage, whether it was permitted under the code or not?
Yes, the, yes, there was no prior variances for any of these signs.
Okay, I don't have any other questions. Do you have any other questions?
No additional questions, Madam Chair.
All right.
Wait, 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 this is the court reporter. Sorry, I need you to spell your last name, I didn't catch it phonetically.
Yes, it's Cancilla, C-A-N-C-I-L-L-A.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Apologize for that. It's the voice of Oz, it's the court reporter from, we're not seeing you in person, so I apologize for that. Is there anybody attending who would like to comment on this application for North Shore Drive signage? I'm seeing no hands raised, so we will accept the exhibits as part of the record, and we will issue a decision.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here in person. We like seeing that. We like seeing that, too. All right. The last case of the morning is Zone Case 125 of 2024 for Plummer Street. The applicant is identified as Ian Tool. Do we have Ian Tool? Okay, we have Ian Tool and Lucas Bartosiewicz. Hello? Are you there?
Hello, sorry.
That's okay.
My name's Lucas Bartosiewicz, and I'm the architect working on this, and will represent Mr. Tool.
Okay, and is Mr. Tool is also available? I'm going to ask you both to swear in if you think you're going to say something.
Yes, I'm available.
All right, and do both of you swear or affirm that the information you'll provide to the board will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
I do.
Thank you. Joe, could you read the case in, please?
This is Case 125 of 2024 for Plummer Street. The application is for construction of a new single-family house, and they're requesting a variance from Section 903.03.e. A three-foot side setback is required, and a zero-foot setback is requested, and a variance from Section 912.04.l. Parking must be located five feet behind the house, and front yard parking is proposed.
Okay, so, Mr. Bartosiewicz, are you starting? And you might want to spell your name for the court reporter.
Sure, it's a long one. It's B-A-R-T-O-S-I-E-W-I-C-Z. Yeah, so if you look at the first slide, our goal is to take, our goal is to take a small unused lot and turn it into a single-family residence. At the moment, if you go to the next slide, the site is 14 foot wide by 50 foot long. If, and contextually speaking, a lot of the houses existing on this street are built almost the whole way out. If you look at, if you look at the parcels at the corner of the street, 80K, 243, 243A, and 243B, all of those sites have a five-foot setback in the rear, and then as well are built out to the property lines. If you go to the next slide, that's, again, just our zoning, or our parcel and survey of the lot, if you go to the next slide. Our goal is to basically match the context of the existing street and build out a house that is a livable house, that would be 14 foot wide, and go to the edge of the parcel.
That was going to be my question, so, you're requesting a variance from the three-foot setback requirement on both sides?
Yes. I think on the side that's built, we are allowed to build up against an existing structure, but on the opposite side that is open, we need to have a variance for that.
Okay, thank you, and thank you for that clarification. And the structure that's on the left side in this photograph is what?
That is an apartment building.
Okay, and that, it, see, it appears to have an extensive front yard, so you're proposing the one side that would require the variance would basically be in the front yard of that parcel?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, okay, carry on.
Yep, and then as well, if you go to the next slide, we're trying to figure out a way, we're trying to figure out a way to alleviate more street parking, and, or how to maybe have a parking space on the site, even though it is a very narrow site. So our intention was to potentially have an open carport underneath the building with a, with a curb cut in the front of the building. There's curb cuts on the opposite side of the street, on Plummer Street, with garages on the front floor, but our intention for that was to basically create a carport on the, if you go to the next slide, yeah, so the first floor would basically be set back and have an internal garage with a firewall on the right side, and on the left side having a, basically, parking on that side.
Are you, are you, are you proposing an integral garage, or are you proposing a parking pad? I mean, I understand you're saying a covered parking pad, but you're still proposing a parking pad, not a garage?
Yes. I don't believe we can fit up a front door and a garage in this space, so our intention was to have a parking pad that you could then enter through a front door past the parking pad.
So, but you said that there are, I guess, how would, how would a curb cut be disrupting on-street parking in that area?
I think, no, I'm sorry, we were trying to find a way to have somebody park off-street instead of adding another car to the-
But my question is, you're proposing to improve your lot with a parking space at the expense of other parcels that might rely on street parking. So how would a curb cut affect street parking on the, I mean, how many parking spaces would you be taking away to benefit one parcel as opposed to the current situation of street parking?
Yes, ma'am, I understand. To that end, you are correct. I think our intention was to try and match the existing market and what's happening on the street across from us and around us to create a parking space for that parcel. But to your point, I see what you're saying.
Well, we're seeing renderings and not the street itself. Do you have photos of what it looks like on the street now, and so that we can sort of see what you're saying with respect to integral garages or other things in the area?
I do not have a picture of the buildings across the street, but I could send that as additional information once we finish here.
Yeah, I think that would be helpful. I mean, you're only showing us the-
Our lot, yeah.
We saw the one picture of the front, but I'm curious about, particularly if you have a multi-unit next to you, how many, how many parcels are relying on street parking in the area? And, Mr. Tool, if you want to chime in, you can, but-
Yeah, I didn't want to interrupt, just to, so I could testify about the block there, the use of parking. It's an unusually empty block in terms of parking, so that, I believe that, I believe that building, that apartment building has parking, and, hold on a second, I'm just jumping on Google here.
Is there-
It has parking in the rear of the apartment building, so the apartment building is not really using parking on the block, and it's a, it's a pretty open block to begin with. We would only be taking away, we would be taking away one parking spot to have a-
Well, not real. I mean, again, it's the, you bought a small lot, and it's, to me, I'm concerned about the availability of street parking for other people who you would be taking that street parking away from to benefit your parcel. Could, is it a permit parking area, do you know?
Yes, it is.
Okay, so there are people who are relying on spaces on the street to accommodate their permit parking as well. But can you, again, I think it would be helpful for us to understand the streetscape, and part of a variance request is that you would be consistent with the neighborhood. Are there other examples of similar front yard parking that do not involve a driveway to a garage? It appeared from the one photograph that the structures on the adjacent parcel come to the property line, so you have structure to the property line, and maybe that's helpful, I don't know, but I'd be curious about the rest of the area. Is there other information that you want us to review? I mean, I think we understand the request for the side yard setback, but is there other information that you want us to consider with respect to the parking pad?
I do not think so. I think that's all we have.
Any other questions?
No questions.
All right. I'm going to turn to our list of attendees. Is there anybody on who would like to comment with respect to the application for Plummer Street?
I just have one more thing to add.
Okay, thank you, yep.
I pulled up residential parking overlay. This block is not in a residential parking permit zone. It's, in Lower Lawrenceville, permit area A is up the hill above Butler Street. In this area, 40th Street, and below Butler Street, there's no residential permit parking.
Okay, thank you for that clarification.
So this would not be taking up anybody's permitted spot.
But again, I'd be curious as to other residents on the street who might rely on street parking, so if you could, if you have a few additional photographs of what the street looks like, and-
Sure.
Particularly the parking condition, I think we'd like to take a look at.
Sure.
Okay, so with that additional submission, we will close the record when we get that, and we will issue a decision within the time permitted under the code.
Thank you very much.
All right, thank you all for being here. That ends our hearings for the day. Thank you all for being here. We'll see y'all next week.